Could board members please return to the diets, please? If you see them, will you please send them this way? Never got to us. For those of you just joining us, we've been here since 8:30 this morning, so I'll give my peers a couple of seconds. They've been sitting for a long time today, and they might have got lost up there. Trying to grab a bite to eat and get back down here. We do have some public testimony, so what I will do is I will call those that are going to be speaking. I'll call you up, and you come up here and stand, and then, once they come in, we'll start public comments, okay? The people that we have speaking is Lisa Baringa, Celia Walker, Alex Riley, Shayna Forcia, Talisha Daniels, Michelle Morrison, and Alicia Smith. We have more? Uh, yes. One, two, three, yes, Debbie Klein. We're going to go ahead and get started, okay? So who ever wants to be first? Lisa, you want to be first?
Good afternoon, President Jackson, board members, Dr. Greer. First of all, I want to -- condolences for sitting through an entire day of very excruciating decisions, so certainly want to commend you on that. I know it's been a rough day, so we appreciate your time. I'm here to speak on behalf of Evangeline Roberts Institute for Learning. I wanted to let you know that this is a charter school that's coming up for approval in the district. Evangeline Roberts has been working with us, the Charter Association, for over a year on their charter petition document and program. They have participated in our program, our charter launch program, so they have had workshops and modules on every aspect of the charter petition. They have worked on their governance structure, the employees that they want to employ, and the job descriptions that go with them. They've worked very hard on their educational program, developing it. Again, it's taken a long time for them to do that. The group of founders is a group of educators throughout San Diego County. They've been in education for many years. They want to take on this opportunity to run their own charter school program, kind of give it a try, do a smaller choice for folks in their neighborhood. They have a lot of support from their community, and they hope that you will look at them with open eyes and take a look at their program that they've worked hard on presenting to you today. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Zelia.
Thank you, President Jackson, members of the board. On behalf of the Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning, I want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to present. And can I have those that are here to support us, please stand? Thank you. First of all, I need to let you know, my name is Celia Walker, and I am a teacher. I've been in -- I've been teaching for the past 17 years. I also am a product of the San Diego Unified School District, as well as my children, and we did just fine. However, there are other children who need other alternatives, as well as far as support and options. Ms. Evangeline Roberts was my grandmother, in which we would like to honor because of her service to the community, her willingness to share her ability to encourage and build people around her. The mission of the Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning, a positive changing force for all children, is to ensure that K-6 students will become expressive individuals who will exercise their power of choice to become productive citizens and lifelong learners and thinkers. It is our vision to educate our students to change the globe by becoming future leaders who will use their problem-solving skills to improve the quality of life for others. Our beliefs are: We believe in expecting the best from all individuals. We believe all students are entitled to a well-rounded education. We believe each individual is responsible for his or her success. We also believe that everyone is capable of standing up and taking a moral stance for what is right. We also believe that every child is capable of communicating and articulating the spoken and written word. Changing with the times, technology is going to be used to strengthen, to enrich, and to enforce their educational experience. Data Director will help us drive instruction and analyze assessments to meet the needs of each student. As a founder and educator, I understand the direction of our school. I know that the focus is to press children to excel to their personal best, giving students all the necessary tools to move on to the next grade. I understand that all students are expected to meet competency and proficiency by the end of each school year, and accepting no excuses. Knowing that we are a team working together for the best interest of the child, I understand that it is necessary to collaborate and plan the next steps for each child's success. We want to, once again, reiterate that our students will be challenged, and they will meet all challenges and expectations. We will set high expectations and be in close contact with our families. We will also open in the fall of 2010, 2011.
My name is Shanae Fonseca, and I'm a parent and a prospective parent of a student at the Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning. I have a five-year-old son, and at this point, my experience with the public school system is our children are now being moved like cattle. They are being herded from one grade to the next. It is no longer how a child is doing, but how the school measures out overall, allowing children to fall through cracks. Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning will ensure each child is individually assessed -- I'm sorry. Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning will ensure each child is individually assessed so that his or her needs are especially met to truly give meaning to the statement, "No Child Left Behind." They not only make sure their needs are met, but will ensure our children achieve maximum proficiency in all academic errors -- areas at their individual speed. Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning is a definitive institute I see my child, as well as others attending. I am pleased to discover that there will be a school that has faculty that are passionate and dedicated to see, to see too, that our children excel in every aspect of their lives. A school that will nurture our children into being individuals who will respect themselves as well as others through its various programs that promote morality, self-expression, effective communication, and discipline. Arrow will educate our children to make the right decisions for themselves, rather than doing it just because they're told, but to have a true understanding of the power of choice and responsibility. Our children will experience an elite and well-rounded education. They will be taught how and why to eat healthy and live healthy, exposed daily to nutritional foods, exercise, and self-empowerment. Having this foundation will allow my child, our children, to have a positive impact on our future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Morrison, and I too have a five-year-old who would be attending Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning. And I'm also a school psychology trainee at San Diego State University, and I work with students mainly in, well, in the San Diego Unified School District who are considered at risk or have learning disabilities, stuff of that nature. And the programs that Evangeline offers can help those students beyond just sending in one person to do interventions. The whole class can be an intervention. The whole school setting can be an intervention for those students. My child is reading at a third-grade level, and she's only five, and I need to know that she's going to be out of school where she won't get lost in the shuffle. Oh, she knows how to do it, so we need to focus on these kids, you know? Evangeline Roberts offers smaller class sizes, and I know she'll get the attention she needs, and that the other students will get the attention they need at their levels as well. And so, I just, I really appreciate what the school is about, all of my concerns as a parent and as an educator, the school meets and offers solutions for. And so, I feel that it would be a strong asset to the community and to this district if it were allowed to be, to open. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Talisha Daniels, and I have a four-year-old child who will be entering the Evangeline Roberts Institution, Institute of Learning. And right now, she's really advanced, and I believe that she's kind of bored. What she's learning and going to the school will allow her to advance at her pace, and then also, too, they'll offer activities that will help her to, to be more in line and just learn discipline so that she can succeed in life. And I just believe that having the school open would be a great contribution to the children in that area.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexis Watkins, and I serve on the board for ERIL as a concerned community member and parent. I have two children, one at six and a half, and has had a less-than-desirable experience with her current, her current school. The pieces that are missing, in my opinion, right now from public education is the energy and the time, and I know the budget is a big issue. You guys have been dealing with that all day. But I know that this school would differ greatly, and because of the smaller classroom sizes and everything that you've heard them say. The motto and the driving force behind this school is to teach kids to be individual thinkers, to be productive community members, and to think globally, and that is not something that I've seen or experienced at my child's current school. Self-discipline is big. It's really, really big, because if, if all the children don't have it, has a classroom, they're lost, and they're just, they're just passing them on, and they're, they're just being lost. Every person that's a founder of this school is dedicated to their own children, the children they've been teaching for at least, I think, 60 years combined teaching experience. And as a parent, this opportunity is encouraging. Actually, it's a place for me to dig in and to invite others, other parents who don't know how to help. It's not just fundraising for a school, it's volunteering, tutoring, and all the other things that we're going to offer here at ERIL, and I'm excited about it, and I hope that you do give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, and this today is just a public hearing for this particular school. Any board comments? One, any board member want to comment? This was for, she's for the next one. She says CO2, this is CO1. On this list here? On CO1, I called all six people. Yes. Okay, any other comments on this school?
It's going to be located, at this point, we're looking at the Emerald Hills area, Market Creek areas where we, where we want to focus on, within the community.
Thank you.
Yes. I want to say thank you once again for giving us an opportunity to present to you.
The next item is item CO2, which is renewal charter petition for Holly Drive Leadership Academy. This item is an action item today, it's renewal.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Smith. I'm the principal at Holly Drive Leadership Academy. The reason I wanted to speak again today is I read the Charter School Office report, and I wanted to comment on some of the pertinent issues that are still on the table. One of the things that I know is a concern is fiscal solvency for Holly Drive. Holly Drive sought out the advice of an outside fiscal manager to assist us with our budget for the next five years, as well as to assist us with getting involved with organizations to help us with benefactors and things of that nature. We presented a, a board, we actually presented a report that reflects that we will, follow to the penny, we'll be able to have fiscal solvency at the end of our term. We also wanted to ask board to, I know that there were some issues around the enrollment of 145 and 165. We, in the past years, we've had ongoing concerns with city issues and just actually having, not being able to house all the students that want to come to Holly Drive. So, we are at capacity at 145. However, because we have complied with the stipulated agreement from the City of San Diego, we will be adding two more classrooms to our campus this fall, and we will be able to have the students there. On any given year, we turn away at least 40 students and put them on our waiting list and are never able to fill the seats because we just don't have the physical capacity to hold them. So, we're asking for you to take into consideration the budget report we submitted based on those numbers, because we can get the students there. As well as, to, just to further indemnify the district of any concern, we are asking that we move to be a 501(c)(3) within the next 12 months. We've sought the advice of outside agencies like CSMC and Larry Tomayo over at Edge Tech. So, we're asking that, given up to 12 months, we'll be able to move prior to that so that we can indemnify any concerns you may have with our fiscal viability. Also, in the area of not reaching student achievement, we were looking at our similar school ranking, and our school is so small, we weren't able to get a similar school ranking. But in 2007, 2008, we received a state wild desir ranking of one and a similar school ranking of three. If you look at the prior years of 2005, 2006, where we had a statewide ranking of four, had we have a similar school rankings, we would have been above a four. We just never received one because our school's too small. As well as 07, 08, or 607, excuse me, we received a statewide ranking of two, which means it's fair to say, or safe to say, we would have received a similar school ranking of over a four had we been able to have over 99 or 100 kids test. So, we also have met all of our AYP goals. Our school moved from a 504 to a 730 in our charter term. We're asking for you to take into consideration all the strengths at Holly Drive, and as we move forward, we revamped our program so that we can address the needs of all of our new students that are coming in, all of our EL students that are coming in, as well as we've teamed up with the Charter School Association for next year. We're also training all of our staff in systematic ELD, as well as doing an internship at High Tech High. The last thing I want to say is that in 2004, that we were, received some recommendations on our school, and we've complied with all 10. And we want you to know that if staff chooses to renew Holly Drive and you've placed recommendations, that our track record shows that we will follow and we will comply. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything that the staff want? I'm sorry, you done? I'm sorry. You free? I'm sorry. I'm just going on to the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to...
I wanted to hear staff, staff comments, and then we'll get a board recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Kansell.
President Jackson, board members, Dr. Greer, colleagues. This afternoon, the Office of School Innovation and Choice has submitted nine agenda items. I just want to give a little background. Under state law, a charter school must submit a petition for renewal every five years. Prior to the petition renewal, a review team from the Office of School Innovation and Choice visits the school to examine academic performance, financial management, fiscal solvency, governance, and operations. You, as the board, have three options when considering the renewal: charter school non-renewal, approved charter school renewal with condition, conditions, or approved charter school renewal without conditions. Board members have received a board report giving a complete analysis of the review of the Holly Drive Leadership Academy. Staff is recommending that the charter is not renewed based on the school has not operated in a sound fiscal manner over years, and student performance does not meet the requirements for charter renewal set forth in ED Code 47607. The school has not met the state-required academic performance requirements to be eligible for charter renewal.
Thank you. Any board comments or motions?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a motion that we actually approve the charter school renewal with the conditions set out in the staff's report, which is eight conditions that you've, that you've outlined.
Can I second to that? Then I'll second it. We just switch real quick. Okay, superintendent.
Yeah, we do not take likely, lightly the staff recommending the, not to grant a charter. We believe in parental choice. We believe in the, that many of our charters do good work, and it's with great sadness that Rich and his staff came to this conclusion. They brought it with me, and I discussed it with me, and we looked at it. And this is not the first time that this board has heard the concerns about this particular charter. And we continue to, as a team, I think, do this year very good work in overseeing charters. Rich visits the charter schools, he meets with charter principals, he will tell you that I have met with charter principals on numerous occasions and spoken to them and talked with them, and, and, you know, we've, we've got a good relationship with our charter, the majority of our charters in our school district. And so, it saddens us when we get to this point, but if there were a time where we have to say that the charter is not meeting its obligations to the children of our, our community financially and educationally, this unfortunately may be one of the times, and I'd be glad for him to answer any questions.
Mr. DeBak?
Yeah, well, I don't mind supporting the motion with one additional item. There are eight items in the list, but the one that I absolutely insist on including is that the building code violations be cleared by September 1st of this year. It's evidence that they have not been able to get clearance since, apparently, since they were notified in 2006. That's a considerable length of time to work out building code issues. They haven't asked for facilities, and, you know, that's, that's their right, of course. But certainly, they need to have the kids in safe and secure facilities, no matter whether they're inside a church or not, so that, you know, for me, that's an essential condition, and it's the only way I would possibly vote for a conditional renewal. And so, that, if that's added, I would then support that. And I haven't heard that from the people making motions, so...
I can support that.
I guess the question is, how, how realistic is that to get the building approval by September 1st?
Building code violations have to be done within, usually, within a 30-day period. We're talking about now until September 1st. I don't consider that an unreasonable length of time.
Dr. Kansell, do you have any thoughts about that?
If, if the school can, can follow through with that, fiscally, I'm, I'm hearing that they're wanting to add two portable classrooms to increase enrollment. Fiscally, as we look at their ending balance, I, that could possibly be a challenge. I would question that.
Where's the principal at? She was just here.
Just about the facility issue. Just to let you know, we've been in communication with the city attorney's office. They're actually looking into this. This is actually a pending case at Superior Court regarding this particular matter, regarding the conditional use permit. It's still outstanding, there was a stipulated agreement, but at this point, it is my understanding that the school does not have that conditional use permit. Therefore, the school actually can't, can't be located at that particular facility. They are working with the city on that particular issue, but it's been, as been, as been noted, it's been, some time has passed since they've been working on that issue.
Sorry, I don't know who you are, but you say you're supporting the concept of they must meet the, the conditional use permit requirements?
It's, it's very difficult to me by the timeline you're, you've established. I've been in communication with the city attorney's office for about a year now, and I work at the Office of School Innovation and Choice with Dr. Kansell. And, and they've communicated to us their, their concern about the facility. There have been some improvements to the site, but at the same time, they're not technically in compliance with the conditional use permit.
All right, but, you know, for me, that's an essential issue, and I will not vote unless there's absolute assurance that as of September 1st, when the school opens, they meet all municipal code requirements. They're already exempt from state earthquake requirements. They're exempt from a whole lot of special requirements. But the last thing I want to see is kids in a situation where they're not meeting regular business code requirements for safety.
Actually, what's on the table is not correct. Actually, Holly Drive has complied with all code violations. What's in the air right now is a conditional use permit, the license just to operate the school. We are in DSA-approved portable classrooms, there are no health, we've been cleared from health and safety violations, and so, right now, we're just awaiting for a public hearing for the, for the CUP.
And the question is, can you achieve that by the beginning of the school year?
We believe we can, or authorization from the city to operate, which we've been given.
Is Mr. DeBak's question, is it correct? Mr. DeBak?
Well, you know, if the exhibit is incorrect, and you're saying that you would have a conditional use permit in place by September 1st?
Yes, or authorization from the city to operate.
No, no. I said a conditional use permit in place.
Yes, yes.
I, you know, I, I know how things work. You could put appeals in and last this out for, from 2006 until now. I'm saying the times run out. You're talking about, you got to have it all set, the billing's okay to occupy on the 1st of September.
Yes, sir.
That's my position. You guys can vote any way you want.
We're saying we support that if it's, if you can do it. Okay.
President Jackson?
Someone's calling me. Who's calling me? Thank you.
I also think it's, it's, it's written in this report, but I think it's important for the record if the board is going to approve this petition with, or this renewal petition with these conditions. The, this is one area of law where, in the ED Code, the legislature ties the hands of boards in renewing petitions. There were some references to API scores, and there's only one, as, as legal sees it, one of the five circumstances that can authorize a renewal, and that is if the board makes a finding that the academic performance of the students at this school is at least equal to the academic performance of the students at the schools that, that their students would otherwise attend. So, I think the record needs to be clear that not only that the board understands that that's part of, would need to be part of your decision, but that the record reflects that. And I, I can't comment on the...
Well, we don't have the scores of the schools that are around there because we need to have Porter, which is, I think, an API 1. We need to have Valencia Park, which I don't remember what the scores are right now. And, so, can, Mr. Kansell, can you give us?
There, I believe in the report.
Okay, we, I don't, okay, I don't have a computer up here, so I don't have the report.
It's in the brown folder.
They did not give me a whole report.
Is this on page eight?
It's page 11 of 15.
Page 11, I think. I say, I can recommend it.
It says higher than Porter, and, and does not satisfy the statutory requirements.
And that's for mathematics. English Language Arts is on the following page.
We're already precluded for, for renewal. They haven't met requirements in Section 47601, 7A, which is, they have to meet that. If they haven't, then they can't be renewed.
Right. For desir ranking, for 07, 08, they are a 1, and they're a 3 for similar school ranks, which they need a 4 for renewal, and they're a 3.
But I also want to say that Holly Drive is not able to get a similar school ranking in the last two years prior because of our size, as well as... in the last two years prior because of our size, as well as the neighboring schools are all in school reform and Holly Drive is not.
Again, with all due respect, and I do understand what you're saying, we've looked at this as a staff and we've talked about it. We took that into account. We took that into consideration and after carefully looking at that, we still did not think as a staff, and that's the reason our attorney spoke up, that you would, you meet the minimal requirements required by California statute for renewal. It's, again, it's, we, it's not personal. We're very supportive of, of charters and what takes place in most charters, but the board has a, there's a statutory responsibility and that's what Mr. Bresi just talked about. We have looked at those things.
Okay, I just want to clarify. In the staff report under option two, numbers one and two, you talk about achieving an API, API growth targets for the next three consecutive years and that you receive a statewide ranking above the minimum rank of four. Mark, is, are you saying that even if they achieve, you know, those, those two conditions, that we still are not allowed to?
The, the way I read the statute, it says, and I'm, I'm looking at it here, is a school shall meet at least one of the following prior to renewal. Four of the five are objective data and they don't meet those four of the five. I think it's a very good point that as a small school, one of them is, is related to similar schools' ranking and it's, and it is a bit unfair because they don't get one because of the size of the school. The only one in the five that has some discretion embedded in it is the one that I was talking about before. I can't speak, you know, I'm not a statistician and, and I'm not one of the educators around here. So, in terms of comparing the scores of these students with the scores of the students at the schools that their students would otherwise attend, it, it doesn't give a rigid, you know, within a certain percentage or within a certain number. So, there is some flexibility there. And I assume that that's one of the reasons why in this report, it does give the board options for approval. But I think in order to meet the letter of the statute, if the board does approve a renewal, they have to make a finding that one of those five conditions exists and that's the only one that you could make.
Well, also, I just want to say this last comment. In 07, 08, the, the ranking that just came out, Holly Drive, we've seen a state-wide ranking of one and a, and a similar school ranking of three. In 05, 06, we had a, so that's fair to say that in 05, 06, we had a state-wide ranking of four. We would have had a similar school ranking had they given us one over a four, but we just didn't get one because we're, of our size. So, in the last two years, we would have gotten a similar school ranking of over a four, had we been, an opportunity to get one.
Okay. So, I guess my question, are you done, Rivera? And I think, Mr. DeBecque, you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, you know, I've been a strong supporter of charters, but this is not the first time that we have had Holly Drive issues brought forward. And, you know, I'm looking at academic accountability you haven't met. I'm looking at financial accountability we haven't met. And there's a concern, which I share with Mr. DeBecque regarding facilities accountability. We're getting a very strong recommendation from our staff that this is not good for these 145 children and, you know, based on, you know, state statute. I don't, I just, I have to say, I can't support this and I support charters strongly. And, you know, I do believe that they offer an awful lot of innovation and when they're strong and when they're good. In order to, the charter school renewal with conditions, these conditions, you have to achieve API growth targets for the next three years, receive a statewide ranking, minimum of a rank of four. The school changed from dependent arm of the district charter school to a nonprofit public benefit corporation, which is, you know, arm of the district is a safe harbor. And then, the school maintains sufficient cash reserve with the county treasurer. All of these things are, are, not the least of which, the school achieves a district-acquired reserve for economic uncertainty of $50,000 or 3% of expenses and maintains that reserve requirement for the term of the charter. And then, in addition to all of the requirements for conflict of interest and Brown Act training and charter schools and bylaws, I, I just, I want to be honest and, you know, I, I could just vote and not say anything, but I want you to know why I won't be supporting. And as Dr. Greer says, it's not personal, but I just, I don't, it's not meeting the standards that I need for charter school.
And the conditions number, option number two, this says that this is, the, the conditions must be achieved by June 30th, 2010. And in failure to meet those, we'd immediately revoke the charter petition. If the charter school is actually seeking to get a 501(c)(3) and they are, then I, I mean, I, I think that, I mean, the staff put option two here with conditions because there is a little bit of latitude that we have. And I would say give them the latitude to, you know, go this additional year to, and I agree, Mr. DeBecque, CPU needs to be in place by the beginning of the school year, otherwise it is immediately revoked. And so, I guess my, 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 my only question would be, rather than renewing this for five years, that it is only renewed for one year, so that it's very clear upfront that we expect these items to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's just my comments.
Okay.
I have a-
Well, that's what, well, that's, what a question. If you're saying it's not illegal, then why is it here as an option? If, if none of this, oh, if none of this was, was valid, then it should not have been here as an option.
It has to be presented to the board.
It doesn't have to be presented, it has to be explained to the board why we're not recommending it.
Are you asking about renewing for a year rather than five? That's, that's permissible. I think that the code says that a charter can be granted or renewed for a period of up to five years.
Oh, I thought it was five-year automatic.
Thank you very much.
To a year.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Evans?
My question is, actually, to the other board members, in terms of what is your reasoning as far as extending it when the conditions haven't been met? I'm just interested in knowing that.
Well, I mean, as I read the report, this school has had success in the past and, and there are obviously issues, it seems, over the last two years. So, you know, I, I think if this school has had an ability to, to achieve success in the past, I'd like to see it given the opportunity to achieve success going forward. I think these conditions are pretty clear and, and straightforward. And I think if the conditions are not met, then, you know, at that point, the, you know, the-
So, so in terms of the past achievement, is that like on page eight, table four? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, and then comparing it to the schools around the particular area, it has done quite well with the students that it's had in this particular, in this particular academic program.
So, for, yeah, okay, so for example, currently, or the 2007, 08, for, for math, they are similar to some and a lot higher than others. And I guess the same thing with English, right?
If you look, the school met its AYP goals in 2004, 05, 06, and 07.
Where's that?
On page nine.
Okay. Page nine. I, I don't see that.
At the very top?
Top of page nine, the, the table.
Oh, there it is. Okay, AYP, yes. AYP, yes, 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 yes. Okay. Hmm, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please.
Yeah, okay.
Before we do it, I got to be sure I understand this. The renewal with conditions says here that it's a five-year term.
Okay.
And it says that they have to meet conditions three through eight, or they will be immediately revoked. So, that means that three through eight, which is, the school changes its status from an arm of the district, it maintains a cash reserve, it has expenses that won't exceed revenue, and it generates sufficient operational surplus, and it has a required reserve of $50,000 minimum. And eight, which is have current, all have, board must have current terms and appropriate Brown Act training. We still, it still says it's a five-year deal.
Okay, well, I, we, I'm willing to amend it to one year.
Sorry, but when you say the option of a one-year deal is not one of the three options.
Because we can amend it to be one year. You made the motion, so it's a one-year renewal.
And it does say that the conditions need to be, that those conditions need to be met by June 30th, 2010.
I fully aware of that. Okay, but even so, I still believe that it ought to be a one-year renewal.
Okay, I agree.
So, we have a motion and a second, and I never seconded it. I just said it was a condition of mine that they get the conditional use permit in place by the first of the next opening of school.
So, can you, can you clear the, the, thank you.
So, I accept Mr. DeBecque's amendment that the conditional use permit needs to be in place by September 1st and I accept Ms. Jackson's amendment that it's a one-year renewal.
Okay. So, now we're voting on the amendments.
I think Mark had a comment.
Just on the amendment, sir.
Yeah.
Do you have another comment or not?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Just voting on amendments.
Was it totally just a modification?
Okay, just a modification?
So, we're voting on the whole thing as conceded.
As, as stated. Okay, so, let's take that one more time. This option two recommendation, term would be from July 1, 2009 to July 30th, 2010, with the-
June 30th.
June 30th, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2010, with a requirement that the CPU be in hand by the 1st of September and the other eight items be taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct, everyone?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, please vote.
Well, Safina, we're waiting.
Waiting for you, okay.
It's a real suspense.
And that passes 4-1, okay? You got a year, get it done.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Jackson, I'd just like to make a motion that we accept items CO2 through, I'm sorry, items CO-
Three.
CO3 through C-
Through C10.
Through C10?
Yeah.
Is there any objections to that?
I, I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We accept everything, CO3, C10. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Uh, just one.
Staff? Okay.
Just to re-review, just a second.
Were any of these recommended otherwise than renewal?
No.
But staff has nothing to say.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
The comments, staff? No.
But I, well, but I think that Larry Rosenstock should have to stay here for at least another hour, just because he's-
Okay. Any, okay, please vote. No comments, questions, please vote. That passes 5-0. The rest of that concludes this particular meeting. We'll take five minutes, board members, no more, then we'll just go back to our budget meetings that we saw earlier.
Five minutes, no more. Five minutes, no more.
Not leaving the room.
Okay, don't leave it.
All right. Now we're going to lock the gates. Use that. Use it.
Okay. I mean, if you, if you're ever going to not, if you're ever going to not renew a charter, this is the one that I'm not renewing. Well, I'm going to renew though.